Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council here to order on July 9th at 7:30. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Bessasi.
Here.
Diastis.
Here.
Sanica.
Here.
With five present and one absent, there is a quorum, and therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. I beg your pardons for my voice in advance of this meeting. I'll try and keep it quick. The first order of business would be to approve the minutes from June 18th, 2019 Committee of the Hole, as well as the June 25th City Council Meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Bessasi. Are there any corrections?
I just have one correction, Mr. Mayor. It was on the Committee of the Hole meeting where I was speaking about the electronic capabilities for meetings. As I think it was reflected, and I probably misstated it, it's not a state law that requires approval of a doctor's note or travel itinerary for businesses. That I may have spoke about, but I was saying that was an additional stipulation we could put in, as if somebody started to use it outside of the norm or the exception, is that we could require either an emergency note from a doctor or travel itinerary if it's business-related.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anything else for the minutes? All right, seeing none beyond that, shall the minutes be approved? With all the others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Moving forward in the agenda here, the first point is the mayor's report, and I just want to say that we see an outline letter here for support of the Illinois move over laws. One of the vendors that we have been using lately for the past two years, the Hasselert system in our fire trucks and ambulances, has been working with other firefighting entities across Illinois and Florida. They had drafted a letter back on May 12th, and the Senate Appropriations Committee was acting on the Transportation Appropriations Bill the week of June 24th. And so they had forwarded a letter for me to go ahead and sign in conjunction with my approval of these move over laws and helping to get additional funding for our state in order to further pursue more aggressive tactics for keeping our first responders, firefighters, police, et cetera, safer when sirens are moving and traffic is moving. The other thing was the 4th of July holiday, which was phenomenal. Thank you to all of those who participated and all those who volunteered to get the event to be what it was. I had nothing but great feedback from residents whom I encountered. It was definitely a little bit steamy, much like the year before, but everything turned out well, from the parade in the morning, the post-party at Reps in the parking lot, to the fireworks. That leads me to the next week. This Saturday, there's another parking lot party hosted by the Park District on Saturday the 13th, and I do hope that others attend there as well. With that, are there any ward reports?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
And Mr. Horn and Mr. Sutchecky have been great on. There was a concern brought to my attention about patching of Oriole and South Streets, but I'm happy to announce that it's part of the agenda tonight to approve some additional funding for that. We know it's a short-term approach. Mr. Horn and I exchanged a few emails on that, but a couple of residents reached out to me over the last two weeks and was glad to let them know there's a short-term approach, but we will look at longer-term approach for road maintenance in the future.
Wonderful, thank you. I do have one minor issue brought forth by Alderman Bud Mattz of the Second Ward. He is not at this meeting, but he did receive several phone calls from residents regarding the storms that passed through here the week prior to the 4th of July week, and some residents were concerned or a little bit aggravated regarding the lack of responsiveness that they had received from ComEd or from our ComEd representative, and he just wanted me to convey that to the city. Next item is opening the floor for 20 minutes, and it seems as though there are not any signatories signed in on our sheet, so we can go ahead and move forward to the consent ordinances, which brings us to the first reading of these consent ordinances, which consists of three items, A, B, and C. Does any Alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the three ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion to consider these ordinances for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Diastis for seconding it. So first one, A is to amend Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Licenses, Section 6-77, Hours and Days of Sale for Class A1, Class A2, Class A3, Class D, Class G1 Liquor Licenses. Item B is the ordinance to approve liquor license applications for Class A2 Liquor License for KKUN Enterprises, Inc., doing business as KBBQ at 1923-1925 South Plum Grove Road. And item C, ordinance to approve the liquor license application for a Class A2 Liquor License for Sally's Restaurant at 1913 South Plum Grove Road. The question is, shall all these ordinances be moved forward for a second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessasi.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, these ordinances will be moved forward for a second reading. Moving on, that brings us to new business, and that new business is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for July 9th, 2019. Is there such a motion to approve the bills on warrant?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion with regard to the payment of bills on warrant? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Moving swiftly along to the consent resolutions, the next item on the agenda are the consent resolutions, which consist of six items at this time, items E through J. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for resolution?
Mr. Mayor, J, please.
J. Okay.
Item H, Mr. Mayor.
Any others wish to be removed at this time?
Item H.
H. I have both J and H, so that would now leave us with four items, and that would be items E, F, G, and I. To be moved through, so the chair now declares it in one motion to consider all four of these resolutions without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman Bessasi. So, reading. E, Resolution Number 19R-78, amend the fiscal year 2019 budget except the 2019 General Obligations Bond Series 2019 Debt Services. F, Resolution 19R-79, is to award a construction contract related to the replacement of existing water main on Weber Drive, Waverly Park Subdivision, and it's bond-funded. Resolution Number 19R-80, awarding a professional engineering contract for construction observation and related engineering services for the proposed Weber Drive, Waverly Park Water Main Project, also bond-funded. Then there's I, Resolution Number 19R-82, approve Kirchhoff Road resurfacing, change order number one, approval for additional removal and replacement of approximately 90 feet of roadway median on Kirchhoff Road east of Hicks. Again, the question is, shall those four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
That leaves five in favor and none opposed, so those four resolutions are adopted. Circling back, we have Resolution H. Alderman Sanica, you asked for this resolution to be pulled, so you're entitled to the first comments.
I have--
I'm sorry.
Motion to put it back.
May I have a motion to put this back on?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis, seconded by Alderman Cannon. Alderman Sanica?
I have a request for clarification from staff regarding some of the details of item H. So, in our packet, it says that the 2021 scheduled resurfacing is on schedule. Is the skip patching going to be used to then push that resurfacing to a future date since it can maintain the roadway for three to five years?
I don't-- Can I ask where you--
Sure. I'm on page 107 of the packet, and in the background section--
Yeah.
Sorry, page 108, for when it's talking about skip patching, it's saying that we'll be able to extend the life of the roadway for three to five years.
Correct. Yeah, okay.
And so, since 2021 is when that road is scheduled for resurfacing, are we then going to push that resurfacing later, past 2021, to a future date?
Yes, likely we will. When we spend that much money on a skip patching a road, we want to extend the life as much as possible, so my expectation is that we would push it off a couple of years, depending on the performance. Central Road and Campbell Road are perfect indicators. Campbell Road was actually scheduled for 2020, and if you drive down that, it likely won't be done for a good five years. So it's to extend the life of the road, so that is correct.
And then, my other question or clarification is regarding the deferred project that was mentioned. There's a portion of this background, so in the same section, where the money that would be used to pay the contractor is from a deferred project. Can you describe what that deferred project is?
Sure. It's coincidentally related to Kirchhoff Road. In 2018, when the city entered into the agreement with IDOT, the final agreement, to fund our portion, the initial estimates were higher, so we could take advantage of the full funding amount available to us. What was done is because we didn't know the exact price at that time, there was additional funding added for median reconstruction, because we didn't know at that time if the median would be included in the project. We since realized significant savings by having the median included in the grant awarded project, so that money was really earmarked for the median work, which now doesn't need to be spent on the median because it was included in the grant work.
So then, when we're referring to a deferred project, then that's not something that we'll have to reallocate in a future time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. No further clarification at this time?
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions by anyone on the council for this matter? Seeing no further questions, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Five in favor and none opposed, that resolution is adopted. And then this brings us to Resolution J, 19-R-83, award professional services contract for biannual engineering inspections for seven city roadway bridges. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cannon, you asked if this resolution be pulled?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't be supporting this tonight, because if you recall, when we first heard about this a couple of months ago, I suggested strongly that we go outside and get some other bids on this project. I have nothing but nice things to say about Christopher Burke Engineering. I think they do an outstanding job for us on most things. This is not about the quality of their work, but I think we owe it to the citizens, even on a small bid like this, that we go outside and get some competitive bidding to make sure we're getting reasonable pricing on a thing. So I just want to let people know why I won't be supporting it.
Thank you. Is there any further follow-up or comments regarding this item?
Can I request some clarification from staff regarding the bidding process for this particular contract?
Again, I would just say that we do not bid engineering services. It's based on qualifications, and as discussed at the Committee of the Hole last year, we use Christopher Burke Engineering primarily for road projects and some stormwater projects. The reason it's helpful to have them doing the bridge inspections is because they are an integral part of our development of our capital improvement plan, so when we have significant bridge repairs, they can help us plan it because they're aware of what they're seeing out in the field regularly. These are annual inspections that are-- biannual inspections required of all of our bridges as required through IDOT.
Thank you. Are there further questions or concerns regarding this?
None at this time, thank you.
Wonderful.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This might be Mr. Horn following up on Alderman Sanica, because from your just experience, I would imagine this is in the ballpark. I mean, from the last time, we might have not used Burke. It didn't catch my eye by surprise, being $12,000, but again, that's not my expertise area, but I'm guessing it's within realm.
Yeah, I didn't find it to be unreasonable. Again, I'm not opposed to getting additional pricing. I just don't know that the net effect would be significant enough to benefit, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. No further comments or questions. And seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
With four in favor and one opposed, this resolution is adopted. That brings us on to other business and reports, and first line item there is the mayor's appointments. Fourth Ward Alderman. So I've spent the past couple of months interviewing several candidates. I did, I believe, made a miss-- I misspoke and used a poor choice of diction when I said I was collecting resumes when interviewing individuals, and I guess what I should have said is I'm collecting requests and inquiries. I don't feel it's appropriate to collect resumes, because when we do go through the election process, not one of us has handed out a resume or a curriculum vitae to explain our intent with being civically-minded. But through those interviews and through the candidates, I ended up making my final determination, and I feel that this individual, Jennifer Veniziano, would represent the Fourth Ward's constituents quite well, and as a result, I'd like to see a motion to appoint Jennifer as the Fourth Ward Alderman.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis, and thank you, Alderman Sanica. With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Bessasi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed--
Five, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. With five in favor and none opposed--
None opposed.
None opposed. I have candy in my mouth, I apologize. Welcome to the Fourth Ward seat. What we will do is, following the next meeting, we'll have an official swearing-in, and we'll welcome you up here, and I would appreciate if you stick around after the meeting and connect with any of the other council members whom you haven't connected with prior to the meeting's start at this time. So thank you. Moving on, there are no mayor's proclamations. City Clerk, do we have any reports?
No.
No reports. And that will bring us to staff reports, community items of interest. Manager Crumstock?
I'm going to slow it down now that we've been picking up speed. I do want to thank everybody who donated blood on Thursday, June 27th. The next scheduled blood drive is not until Wednesday, December 18th, so save your blood up and put it out at that point in time. We do want to mention, as you can see throughout the committee, that the signs have been going out that the Friends of the Rolling Meadows Library, their summer book sale is scheduled this weekend. There's a preview on Thursday, but Friday, July 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., Saturday, July 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Sunday, July 14th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Obviously, as we always say, there are bargains galore in there, books, CDs, DVDs, audiobooks, movies, and whatever they can put out there. As what has already been mentioned once before, the parking lot party from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. is at the Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. It is this Saturday, July 13th. There will be food, drink to purchase from a food truck, I don't remember which one. Music entertainment will be provided by the band Hi-Fi Superstar, and it starts at 7:00 p.m. for the music. There's all kinds of family fun, events. If you have not got your little spot from the Park District, they still will take reservations. Great if you decorate, sometimes they do have themes out there, too. We do want to mention, after that Saturday, that the Next Friday Rock is scheduled for Friday, July 19th. This event takes place between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. in Kimball Hill Park. The music this time will be provided by the musical group 1976. If you miss the Saturday, June 22nd bike ride sponsored by the Environmental Committee, the next one is scheduled for Saturday, July 20th, starting at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. You can do the bike ride, and then you can come straight to the next Farmers and Food Truck, our market that we have also on Saturday, June 22nd. That is, I mean, excuse me, July 20th. That is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Community Church, again, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. We do want to reiterate, even with the extreme heat, the Meadows Cruise Nights are back, and we do thank Meadows Christian Fellowship located at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. The cruisers will be around until September 6th. The family fun is between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. If you want additional information, please visit www.meadowscrewsnights.com. We do want to mention that Saturday, August 3rd, from 11 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Community Church of Rolling Meadows will be celebrating the 62nd Annual Corn and Craft Fair. The Art and Craft Fair is actually from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So what I would recommend is you go there for lunch, then, later that night, we do have a family movie night sponsored by the Rolling Meadows Police Department in Legoland Discovery Center, also, again, that's Saturday, August 3rd. We do have different events scheduled between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. at the Community Center, 3705 Pheasant. There will be some games, kid-friendly activities. There's going to be a dunk tank that the chief supposedly says he's going to be in there. You will not see the manager or Alderman in there, but we do have one change on that one that we do when we were typing this. The first Lego movie was going to be the movie of that night, starting around 9 o'clock-ish. It'd be very nice, and I will say, there was a little hiccup, but now we're going to get the new, recently released Lego movie, so Part 2, as the additional out there. So again, it is a family night between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. Around 9:00 p.m., the movie will start. It's good for all ages, I got to tell you. But again, this is what we replaced the bike ride that we've done in the past, and then again, that is Saturday, August 3rd. That actually leads us to National Night Out, which is Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Rolling Meadows Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. Scheduled entertainment at this point in time for this year's is Molly Callahan. She's the female singer from Lieutenant Dan Band. She will be performing the National Anthem and one other song. I don't remember what the other song is. We will also have Canines in Flight, that's the frisbee dog show. We'll have the Extreme Team, that's the high-flying basketball era acrobatica group. Circus Boy, that's his name. The Crown, he'll be throughout the crowd, doing different stuff during the evening, juggling, stilt-walking, comedy tricks. The Skydivers will be back, so what I tell you is, you want to be there before that 6 o'clock start, because when they drop, they're the first thing that you will see. They do start the event. We will have the Reptile Show, we'll have Midleville Times back there. Rolling Meadows Police Officer Chris Don and K9 Scar will be doing another demonstration. The Chicago Bears Drum Line, the Chicago Bears Mascot, these are all ones that we have confirmed at this point in time. If you want more information, or I was speaking to quickly, please contact the police department at 847-255-2416. We do want to also mention, and we'll keep on doing this, obviously, at the end of the meeting, but Friday, August 16th, is the Fifth Annual Windown by the Creek. This event is obviously where beer, wine, and food will be purchased. The music for that night will be Seventh Heaven. We will be in Kimball Hill Park at 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Really, the music runs from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I do have one thing to add that was not in the items, and that's actually just to mention one of the newest groups. It's called Isabella's Cafe. They will be opening, very soft, they're still learning, still testing the menu and everything else. They're at 5540 New Wilkie Road. Obviously, we just want to mention that hopefully, within a week or two, they will be really announcing everything, and hopefully, they'll be doing a ribbon-cutting. This is the Old Spice Grill location, and again, if you want additional information about what Isabella's has, please contact us. We do have what their current menu is, and they're actually expanding it before they even opened with some of the other pieces. That's items of interest.
Thank you. That's a pretty intense next two months' worth of events. I'm looking forward to it. I can't wait for the Skydivers, to be honest. It's probably one of my favorite parts of that whole portion of National Night Out. But moving on, we have the first quarter financials from Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we've got the first quarter financial statements, and it is about a 20 or so-page report. It is in the council packet, being that it's a first-- Being that it's the first quarter, I'll keep my comments brief. The first quarter does cover January through March 2019. It is unaudited. We primarily look at the General Fund, the Utilities Fund, and the Refuge Fund through March 31, 2019. We have a detailed income statement, detailed revenue charts. We have the transfers completed per the 2019 budget, and then all funds income statement and a cash and investments report. Since we primarily focus on the General Fund, we're about 25% of the year for this report. All-in revenues are about 11.9 million, about 10% better than budget year-to-date, primarily attributed to the first quarter or the first installment for the property taxes. General Fund expenditures all-in are about 11 million. Year-to-date, that's about 8% better, a little higher than budget, and again, that is attributed, again, when there's a corresponding revenue for property taxes, we also would have that in expenditures for the pension funds. We've got a lot of detailed information, a couple of items that I did highlight in the memo, is that the city's video gaming revenues are coming in a little bit lower than budget, and that really is due to the fact that it's still a new revenue source. And also, the projection was based on about 10 establishments. We have five up and running right now, and one coming soon. We have the budget amendment for Resolution 19R-04 that was adopted this earlier this year, that did repay the General Fund, then with transfers back out to the building and land, and also the local road fund, and those are detailed and footnoted in the memo as well. And then the Utilities Fund and Refuge Fund are coming in about where you would think so for the first quarter as well. A lot of detailed information behind the actual memo and the cash and investments piece as well. We will be expanding that, because we are also tracking the bond expenditures and our IRS arbitrage calculations. But for the first quarter, all-in, about $33 million across all funds, with the General Fund showing the largest share at a 37% or 12%-- 12 million year-to-date. So I just wanted to keep the comments brief. There's a lot of information in here, and I'm always happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that we're tracking as predicted, and that there aren't any major surprises or hiccups, so I appreciate that. Moving along, still focusing on the next couple of months, and at least the latter portion of this month, we have July 16, 2019, Committee of the Hall draft agenda.
So we actually have nine listed. Number nine's going to be removed. Obviously, we'll be rescheduling that for another Committee of the Hall meeting, but what we do have is emergency operation management training for the elected officials that will be done by the fire chief. There is a test on that one that you have to do, too. City website, we will actually be going over our site. We've changed some pieces. We also want people to feel comfortable with all the information that's out there. We do have certain people who don't even know that we have the city portal that people can find out additional information. We will have a discussion about our G1, the grill and hood, or the electric grill without the hood. Feeding of wild animals, Alderman Cannon brought that up, and we are bringing that discussion up. You get a presentation by me about the basics of Robert's Rules, and then some additional. Alderman Sanoyka will be doing chickens in Rolling Meadows, the ones that you keep at home, not the other pieces. We'll be having a discussion about space needs here in the city, obviously, within-- and then there will be a discussion about city property for this Committee of the Hall.
Thank you. And then why don't we just consider moving on along to the July 23 city council draft agenda?
So we have a draft for the July 23 meeting, the last meeting of the month, and you do have before you, obviously, the second readings. What will change from tonight is that after we're done with the pending items, the three ordinances, then we will be doing the swearing-in, and then we will do another roll call, and then we will do all the new business at that point in time. And I do want to reiterate to the city council, there will be a closed session for this meeting. So, sorry, can't make it too short.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving along from there, are there matters not on the agenda by any council member? Alderman Bessesi?
Just a couple of things. First one, it's more for question for Rob, real quick. Rob, I've had some residents ask how's Kirchhoff Road coming, and do we have a tentative date when that's--
I actually--
I know we had some setbacks.
Yeah, the weather in May, definite, May and June kind of delayed us a little bit. I don't have an exact date for completion, but I am not aware of any concern regarding a delay in the project. I still think we're on schedule to complete it ahead of what IDOT's required completion date is, which I believe is in September. So again, I--
So we're on track.
--as I did last week or so. I'll just defer and say that I think we're on schedule, but I'll get more accurate information at our next meeting.
Awesome. Yeah, sorry for surprising you on that one.
No, no.
The next thing, one other community event. There is an annual event at Trinity Lutheran Church for pet blessing and picnic, hot dogs, things like that, on Saturday, the 20th, from 12 to 2. And that's it.
Thank you. Any further matters? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually, I don't like to ask our police department to do anything more than the great job they do right now, but a couple of things have come to my light in the last couple of weeks that concern me, and I was just going to ask if the chief could either give his troops a shout-out to ask them to watch. I've seen a couple of things with young people on bikes that has been very concerning. I was actually going down Old Plum Grove Road the other day at about 9:30 at night, and a young man who couldn't possibly be more than fifth grade was on a motorized bike on the wrong side of the street, no reflectors, no light. And Chief, I understand that this is not easy, but I would just ask you if you could talk to your guys and girls, if they see someone, to at least discipline them, because I just see a disaster waiting to happen. I've had, and I don't know what it is, but in like the last two or three weeks, I've seen people make some major mistakes on bikes. I was in our neighboring town to the east the other day, and a gentleman about my age on a bike went right through a red light in a major intersection, traffic going four ways, pulled right in front of cars, and went like this with his hand, expecting, and the traffic's going 25, 35 miles an hour. I was just stunned. And I've seen a couple of other motorbike things, and I know it's pretty difficult, you guys got a lot of stuff on your plate, but if you could just maybe give them an extra thing and say, hey, you're not doing us a favor by not disciplining them in some fashion. I'm not saying you got to give them a ticket or throw them in jail or anything like that, but just let them know that they can't go in, you know, in a disrespectful way and not cause harm, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Anything further? Seeing none, I would like to request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon.
Second.